I guess it's seven o'clock, so. Behind us. So we got the call attention, what happens your planning board meeting to order? We all rise for a pledge of the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let the secretary perform a roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Prino?
Here.
Mr. Baratiko?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Tred?
Here.
Mr. Borioso?
Here.
Mr. Mina?
Here.
Mr. Flora?
Here. Okay. So our first item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding Cube Smart Outdoor Storage of Recreational Vehicles amended site plan. Uh, well, yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be good.
A little tight tonight. Good evening.
Happy New Year, Mr. Bruni.
Happy New Year.
Um.
Do we have a freestanding mic there?
No, just a pack. Can I yell?
Yeah, you can yell.
Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you.
Okay. So, um, we've been in front of the board before, I think we were here last time, November. And we've got the comments from the planner, we take no exception. As far as the, we'll rerun the traffic and make modifications we need to.
All right.
I guess the only question we had was on the turning template.
Yeah, that's, uh, right here. We had a, we had used a sedan with a boat, and the reason why we used a boat is because if you use a pickup with a Montan or, excuse me, a fifth wheel, you could actually do a tighter turn. But a boat, you can't because you jackknife. So we used that, but we have no problems.
Okay. Um, so I know it was discussion regarding, I guess it's, you're showing the spot, you know, the, where they have the turning going through, and then you have those two spots that are kinda like perpendicular to those angled spots.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, are those necessary, or do you think maybe?
You're talking about these two here?
Yeah, those two.
We think somebody.
I mean, if that's the, I mean, if that's what's really, you know, the overlap, or even proposing those as, you know, spaces for smaller trailers, something to that effect?
It would be something like a 16 footer, I would assume.
Yeah.
You know, they're bringing them with the car, they leave it.
Right, right, right.
A lot of these may be just vans, like Mercedes vans.
How deep are those spots?
Uh, they vary. Uh, these are 55, and these, they get smaller.
Yeah.
So a lot of these, I think, will be, you know, basically the buses. And as you know, this is way in the back.
Yep.
Spot in the building.
Yeah, yeah, out of sight, out of mind. I know last time we were pretty much good with everything, for the most part. Um, yeah, and, well, I think it's, I think everything's good except for, I guess there was a concern about the turn, you know, the template.
We could use.
Being used, yeah. I mean, we've, um, I'll refer to the professional staff first. I mean, do you guys wanna go through the comments a little bit? I mean, I mean, it sounds like it's just one, there's only one issue here.
There's really one issue. It's revising that turning template.
Yeah, it sounds like we're very close here.
Yeah.
So what do you guys feel to resolve this and wrap it up? What do we need to see on paper?
I think if you wanted to authorize the preparation of a resolution with the revision to that turning template being a condition, um, I don't think that John has any outstanding comments. Um, I just need to make sure that the turning template, whatever you revise it to, gets a green flag from the traffic consultant, and then, um.
They just ditched those two little tiny spots there.
Or just make them a little shorter, or change the angle.
Yeah. Looked like if you shorten them up, that it would work.
I can shorten.
Yeah.
But if we shorten, we leave this template, or?
I think you can use that template, I mean, it's just clipping those two. So if you shorten them up and keep that template, um, that'll work.
Okay, we'll do that.
Can I see the, uh, the turning templates, where those spots are? Can you fill in, once you make them shorter, can you fill in the space that's not to be used with striping?
Oh, you're talking about, like, if I don't use these?
Well, if you take those two and just bring them shorter, and then finish that out.
Oh, but, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, just to make sure that it doesn't get filled in, because that's.
Okay, we can do that.
That's the biggest concern. Making sure that it's maneuverable.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
All right. Any, um, any board members have any questions?
Nope.
No?
Ah, good.
Everybody feel comfortable with this one?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Um. All right, so we, I know we authorized it last time, but as I began repeating it, this, when I authorized, you know, so I make a motion to authorize the planner to draft the final resolution for amended site plan approval.
I'll make that motion with the condition on that turning template.
Okay. Motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, say none, motion carries. Okay.
Just for the record, the last time I.
Yes.
And also granted a lighting waiver to increase the pole height up to 20 feet.
Which we did.
Yes.
Yeah.
With, with the understanding that it was lighting the storage space of recreational vehicles that would be.
Tall.
Tall.
Yeah, it still met the, it still met the.
Yeah, and it still complies with all other elements of the lighting code.
Okay, so with that?
Thank you all.
All set, all right, take care. All right. Okay, so. Our next item on the agenda this evening is site plan, special use permit for Randolph School Summer, uh, Sugar Shack and Lean Toos.
Hey, everybody.
How you doing?
Hey. Great. Um, my name is Josh, recognize me if from, last time I was here.
Yeah, we have a bunch of new members.
And some of you don't, those of you who I met before, and those of you who I haven't. I'm just a humble school leader, and, um, I wanted to start off by saying I appreciate the patience that's been required in my process, and I've learned a lot. So I'm also grateful to these folks, because I've required a lot of patience of them. So I hope to answer any questions that haven't been made here, and some of the materials that I've shared, um, and I'm happy to also, well, those of you that might recall from last time, or maybe have noticed already, I'm happy to talk about this topic at great length.
I think it's Josh, what's your last name?
My, my last name is Kaplan, and I'm the director at the Randolph School.
All right, well, since you obviously have a copy of the plan, you wanna kinda go through it with us a little bit?
Sure.
Kinda give us an overview of, kinda, I guess, what's there now?
What's there now, great. Um, so, as I mentioned, this has been quite a long process, and a process that began at a complex time in our community. One of the decisions that our organization made was to pivot, um, from inside to outside, that requires some basic outdoor infrastructure. And so you can see some imagery in some of the materials that you have, to get a sense of what it looks like, um, to get a sense of what it feels like, uh, it sounds like, even smells like, certainly invite you to come in and see it in action during the day. But these dot the back field on our campus and part of a playground. So you can see them indicated, uh, sorry, I don't have a floor. Add to my list of things I've learned. But you can see them indicated as framed lean-to. And, uh, they are positioned around that section of the property. Towards the edges.
Yep.
Uh, at the time with intention, they were meant to be spaced apart, so we could keep having our kids at school. There are seven in total out there, they're eight by 12. And that's, that's all that's up there, seven of them.
And these get used, I guess, just during the warmer weather. Pass that down.
Smile.
Is this a picture? Is that one of yours, classes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on this side of it would be where the kids are sitting, and the teachers up here, is that how it kind of works, or?
Yeah, we're quite a different place, like I said, um, but yeah, anytime I come and see what it looks like in action, but as you can see there, that's, it looks like, uh, what you'd see in kindergarten, right? You see the letter chart from the wall. Where the children are, though, was your question, and that's gonna take more than just saying yes, right there, because where they are is often spreading across the five acres of the campus. Where they find themselves in there is to start their day in a small group, to really kind of come together. Harness, the teachers were to harness everybody's energy, but then the day can take them all over the campus. And one of the reasons why, um, even in the colder months, we continue, is because when we began this, we knew that there would be opportunities that would emerge. But I couldn't help myself, um, I put a Fitbits, you know, Fitbits, like on a few of them? I was just curious. It's a distance to go from one place to the other, and they take on average 15,000 steps a day at the Randolph School. And there's tons of research about the engaged body, the engaged mind, right? We've been lamenting for a long time about how kids don't move. And that's something that we realized quickly was baked in, and it's something that has also become a draw for the school. So you ask me a simple question, you get a complicated answer, you get the treatment.
Get the kids' energy out.
It's interesting, people often say, like, well, how do you get them to focus? And when their bodies are engaged, when we need them to sit down for 30 minutes, they're not chomping at the bit to move their bodies. Then we can say, okay, cool, we're gonna go to the library, but you can run across this field to get there, which we realize, even in our indoor spaces, you can't do that in hallways, that's not safe. But there are opportunities in the outdoor classrooms, as they like to say, that extend beyond just studying the natural resources.
I think, I think that one of the, was, what was gonna be the intent of these buildings going forward, if they're gonna change, or are they all seven, and it still continue to be these outdoor classroom type areas?
Yes, the ways in which they have, that's the only purpose for them, is just a three-walled kind of shelter, so that in the elements, so to speak, when the kids aren't, I mean, they all have a lot of equipment that they wear, um, but that they can get cover, have safety, have a sense of home and home base. The difference in the way it's evolved was that that first year, when we were open, and most folks weren't able to be, um, they were entirely out there. My daughter was four years old, and she spent that entire winter outside, and I don't know if you recall, but that was the last winter where it snowed at the beginning, and then the snow stayed on the ground for that whole season. Now, we go inside. Day like today, we spent a lot less time outdoors, but we still wanna prioritize it.
All right, I know.
So, I just have one question regarding, do you use all seven at the same time, or do you just use a handful?
It's interesting, I should totally just give the, like, a yes. But again, at any given time, the dynamic nature of the program means that the groups could be moving, right? They could be going over there to that tree to, you know, do an activity, or visiting another group. So each group is assigned as a home base, one of those?
Okay.
But are they all in use at the exact same moment? Depends.
Okay. That was kinda my question, I didn't know if, you know, one was, you know, if it was.
It's not structured.
Functioning like a classroom, or was it functioning like, you know, a particular task station that people would rotate?
It's had a different, um, some of them have had different lives, but generally speaking, they're function as a classroom, and a teacher, well, a teacher at Randolph has the responsibility for maintaining their classrooms indoors, but also wanting outdoors.
Will any of these be repurposed to be a part of the maple syrup operation?
Um, the maple syrup operation is curricular in its nature, so not repurposed, but the Sugar Shack is an opportunity to kind of build on that, so those would still be learning spaces, classroom spaces, um, as, as they are now.
I just wanna, will that even be changed from like that classroom space to a storage, wood storage, or a fuel storage, or a?
No.
Collection storage, or anything like that?
No, if there's something that schools are always short on, it is in fact, storage. However, um, part of the impetus behind this project is that our school is, is growing, and, um, we see that as a real opportunity, and so we need this space. And we need this space to be home for children, not stuff. That's a good question. Does that, is that?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Is that thing wood, excuse me, is that wood fired or gas?
Uh, you're talking about our evaporator?
Yeah.
Uh, we currently don't have an evaporator, um, it's part of our vision. Currently, what we have is an evaporator pan over fire, or wood.
Well, that's what it is.
So wood fired, yeah.
An evaporator pan over a fire is an evaporation system.
Correct, I'm sorry, we don't have, um, what you might see in here from like liter evaporators, for instance. That is part of a grant proposal for the future.
So a liter system, that you're talking, that's a pretty serious system, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, well, how big of a system are you looking to get?
Their entry level, it's called the half a pint, it's the smallest, like, home, home, um, sugar maker. Our purpose is for demonstration.
What size is that, the half a pint?
Twenty-four by thirty-six.
Okay.
Are the largest.
Okay.
Yeah. It needs to be, you know, we're not, well, I brought some, for you to see, last year's harvest here on the table.
What did we determine the setback need to be on that, building of that size?
So if, are they all eight by 12, some look bigger, do they just have an overhang, or?
Some have an overhang.
Okay.
But they're the same unit.
Okay. Um, that would be my first question in the process, would be to get confirmation on the square footage of those structures.
Okay.
Uh, buildings. Because on the plans, they appear to be different sizes, but in the, uh, the materials that you sent over, there was just the one design of the eight by twelve.
You see, Josh, these three look one size, and then these, like, double a little bit.
Overhangs are bigger, okay, so I can, uh.
Just get confirm, yeah, just get confirmation, we put that in.
This is the footprint of it, this is the overhangs.
So if, if with the overhang, they're under 144 square feet, you're fine.
Twelve by 12.
Yeah, if they are, well, it could be whatever.
Sure.
Cause this is less than 20.
But he's still gonna need a variance for the Sugar Shack.
Mm-hmm.
This one here, what is this?
Yeah, is this previous, or is this part of this application?
That's been there for a long time.
Okay, so that'll show up on the last site plan from?
Should before my time, certainly.
And that one?
The sheds.
Yeah, with the playground on the other side.
Uh, this is, yeah, that's always been there.
Okay.
So we're really just talking about this size?
These seven sheds and the Sugar Shack.
So this one's gonna.
Which I'm, yeah, interested in discussing next, for sure.
Right, this is gonna need a variance for a little more than a foot, but this one is the Sugar Shack.
So I guess the, the issue is that, um, this map is showing the setbacks for the R40 district.
Okay.
Um, but private schools have to double their setbacks, um, when abutting a residential property, right? Now, the setback for anything that is under 144 square feet would typically be 10 feet, and because your school, that would be 20.
And this is big.
Um, and the Sugar Shack is over 144, which means that it would need to be double that setback.
Can, can this one here up front, can that be dragged in a foot and a half? Cause then that, it has 18 point something, so if you could drag this one in two feet.
Then you eliminate the need to get a variance.
And I'd like to eliminate that variance, it's so tiny, I just don't even wanna entertain it, but we do have to entertain it for the Sugar Shack.
Yes, if, if that's where you wanna put the Sugar Shack.
Unless it can be relocated.
Unless you can move that, but he'd have to move that in 50 feet.
So you could think about putting that Sugar Shack somewhere else? Or applying for a setback variance, a rear yard variance?
Okay.
Have you placed the Sugar Shack yet, is it still?
No, I was very explicitly told, don't do anything crazy like that.
Any listed.
So if there's, if there's somewhere else that's farther away from a property line, where you think it would make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you could place it there, and it would eliminate the need to get a variance?
Okay.
But tell him what, you'd need to have this fifty, 100 feet from the rear, from back here, and 50 here, so you'd have to move it somewhere up near this lean-to.
I mean, I would admit, I would assume that he would move it, you know, like here, or here, or, you know, I mean, there's a lot of other places where you could put it on the property.
Where is it now? Is it up near the front?
Uh, no, but it's, it can move its own pallets.
Okay.
Yes.
I, well, I mean, maybe this is a question, I'm taking notes. Um, and maybe these are questions I can ask some of you and come back to you with, but one of my, I guess one of those questions is, um, a big part of the vision is inclusive of a plan to kind of expand our mission, and to offer opportunities to partner with some of our local peer schools, public, independent.
Local what schools?
Peer schools.
Oh.
Um, one of the things that we recognize that we have, as you've already heard me discussing, is, um, a place and a staff that is interested and capable at connecting living and learning, what's happening outdoors in nature, to the standards and the ways in which kids are assessed in the classroom. We also know that everyone, it seems like everyone wants this type of opportunity for kids, but a lot of people feel like they don't know how to do it. Part of the plan is to use the space to be centering for the community, for the school community, but to also offer programming like our neighbors down the road at Stowico Farm do, um, and other organizations nearby. So another important piece of this is, is the placement with an awareness of the, the lines and the variances that may need to be considered. We've also been in conversation for, like, our neighbors have graciously allowed us to use the space that's behind the campus towards Hunter Creek for as long as the school has existed in that place, and so have they. And they're wonderful people, I'm, I'm wondering if the school were able, if the property directly behind the school was the school's? Would that, um, would that allow some more flexibility in terms of the placement in that section of the property?
I don't.
If you're killing the property.
You would, you would need to combine those properties, you have to go through a subdivision application to take those two parcels and turn them into one. And the reason why it would not allow that flexibility is that we would not have control over whether or not you would then sell that parcel to somebody who might not appreciate that setback. So even if you owned both parcels, we would still ask you to respect the setback requirements.
Unless you join.
But if you bought that parcel and combined them into one, then there wouldn't be this property line.
You'd have the other 50 feet.
And so you would not be conflicting with a setback.
Okay. But it's helpful to know.
Even if you moved, you could, the other option is to move the lot line.
Yep, you could get, you could, you could, if you owned both of them, or, uh, I guess you wouldn't actually need to own both of them. If, if you and your neighbors were willing to pursue a lot line realignment, you could take that lot line and shift it however you would like.
I'm not looking for any, you know.
That's probably the best way to go, is a lot line realignment.
Yeah, if you owned the property, then you probably wouldn't wanna combine them, but you could take, you know, a big chunk of this neighboring part property and convert it.
Is that Berry's property?
This is Ernie's.
Martin's on that side, yeah, the berries are a little bit further, and they're both wonderful neighbors.
But you're looking for back here, where you have access to the creek. Here's Ernie's house.
Yep.
He's on this side.
Correct.
The berries are over here.
Well, they're, they go like over to here.
Oh, the berries?
Yeah.
And Ernie goes here.
Yeah.
So there's the school, that's Ernie's house, and that's Berry's.
Okay, so Ernie does go to about here, goes fully behind it.
Part of the idea, this is, this is, you just like to call it the Creek Institute at the Randolph School. It's an opportunity, so like I said, engage your schools, but also follow around theaters, um, connect with other people in the community, bring people in to kind of see the place.
I don't know, this is Elbrequi.
And its proximity to the creek would be central to that, and so that's part of the, it's a question, but certainly has something to do with it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Or just pick up?
Is there electric to the sheds?
No.
No.
No, electric and water, just sheds, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah, John, with the, John, with the, the one on the fringe of the septic area?
Yeah, if it could be moved off the, your, your septic area, that would be preferable.
Lean-to?
Yeah.
This one?
Right.
Whatever, yes.
Yeah.
And then for the, the Sugar Shack building itself? Depending on where that ends up, if it stays where it is, if, if there's gonna be any grading associated with that, we'd like to see that with proper erosion control.
Mm-hmm.
Of the map, we don't really have any major issues.
Thank you.
All right. Malcolm, did you have any other comments?
Um, no, it's all about, you know, confirming the size of these.
Sizes and size of the structure.
Size of the structure will tell us a lot about the setbacks required.
The setbacks, right.
Um, or, and/or the variance is required, and, um, the, the Sugar Shack will need a, a variance, or you'll need to choose a different location for it.
Okay.
Or move the lot line.
Or, or move the lot line, or, you know.
To learn more about moving lot lines before even broaching the subject with my neighbors, who do I talk to?
You can come visit me tomorrow.
Great.
See you. But, but to be clear, the fastest way for this board to entertain an approval is to move the location.
I know.
For what, as far as doing a lot line, where that may give the school more property, it's pretty sloped back there, so that could kinda be done at any time, if you're not in a long rush, and then there's more cost involved in that. So we can chat tomorrow, but the easiest thing would be to move the placement of the Sugar Shack, to get you an approval.
Right, and get us going.
But I wouldn't preclude moving in the future.
No, he, I'll tell him what he has to do, if it's something you want the school to have access to more property, and that's something Mr. Martin is willing to work with you on, I'll explain to you tomorrow and give you the application.
Great, yeah, I wanna just take every possibility that you can.
But yeah, I agree, that, to get an approval to, and to use it this year, you would wanna move it, and then it sounds like it's mobile, like, would you be able to use it one year, and then if it's on pallets, you could move it again?
This, the Sugar Shack?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm an engineer.
Probably not, I would think they're gonna, they're gonna grade out a spot, put it down to the gravel, and pop it up top, most likely.
Or, uh, the, or like, um, pylons. It, uh, it suggests.
Did they build, they built this shed in place, or was it delivered?
Oh, the, the.
The Sugar Shack.
The Sugar Shack is not built, it's just cut lumber on pallets.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That I'm waiting.
So the picture, the picture that's in there was?
Is a conceptual.
That's a, okay, gotcha.
I keep, kept hearing the word conceptual, so I tried to give you images.
Right, okay, this is, right.
Concept and now, at this point, I realized that was horribly confusing.
Okay. All right.
Um, if you just. The, uh, the lean-to's were built during lockdown.
During, right, during COVID, yeah, and it sounds like those aren't really an issue.
I just wanna get the size.
As I said, get the sizes, get the, um, you know, to show that you're meeting the, you know, conformance with the, you know, with zone, yeah. know, conformance with the, yeah, with zoning, yeah.
Uh, okay.
So, um, all right. I mean, I guess, sounds like there's a little bit to do before, before we can go any further with this.
Most certainly. So I have some next steps.
Okay. And would it be, if we do find that he does need some variances, would it be smart for him to go to there first, before he comes back here?
Well, because during that process, he may decide to move something anyway.
Yeah.
So I would do that.
Just saying, so if it's, yeah.
I'd put this on hold, go get the variance, and then come back.
And then come back.
If that's what you choose to do. Again, that's lengthening this process another month, short of just moving the location.
Pete Seeger wrote a song called Maple Syrup Time. He used to sing it over at Randolph School, and there's a line in it, it's definitely in there, and it's definitely, well, he's there, quick solution, everything worthwhile takes a little time, so, um, we'll keep working through it.
Maple syrup during this year, then.
Well, we'll have to just do it the old-fashioned way, and, and keep the dream alive, so, thanks for the opportunity, and to be continued.
Okay.
See you tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, is there anything else that we want to discuss this evening?
Next, next Thursday?
Yep.
The 25th. All four of us will kind of give you an overview, especially for our few, our four new people, different levels of what you understand, so I have an agenda we did in '16 that we found, so I'll send it to you guys, so you can kind of
I think she sent it out.
Oh, she sent it, so we'll have that, and then today I downloaded, only so they'd say Kathy Hoch, because I figured you'd want to know the most current books on SEACRA, open meetings, public hearings, site plan, and subdivisions, so I have all that for you too, I'm gonna make copies.
It's also a training program.
So we can do that, so it counts for annual training.
Yes, it will. It'll count. You'll probably be about two hours, so they'll give you two hours of training.
Oh, you took some of that department's
We still have the photo.
Ones for the
Can we get a copy of that for everybody?
No, no, for SECRA.
Is that next Thursday, the 25th?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Six o'clock.
Oh, I got it in there already.
Six o'clock, next Thursday.
Yeah.
And we'll try to make it.
What's the requirement for the annual training?
Four hours.
Okay.
So this will count toward two, and then
Usually, you get your four hours down at the Association of Towns anyway.
Yeah, for anybody
They're certifiable.
Going down to Association of Towns, there are other opportunities locally. Dutchess County Planning Federation puts on at least four or five classes a year, so those will be, they're either online or in person up in Millbrook. Association of Towns also runs an annual class up in Hyde Park, usually in the fall. There's a class up there, usually like an all-day class, been there a couple of times, it's actually pretty good. But there's definitely opportunities, so if you can't make the, you know, the meeting in the city, there are other opportunities as well, yeah, so.
And B will constantly send you emails as we get told what's coming up, so some are online Zooms that you can almost hook in at certain times, or at your leisure. Like Bruce just said, you can go to Millbrook for some.
Also, the New York Planning Federation.
Is that one by Darrell's place?
Which one?
Couple of times, about Darrell's, the bar.
No, the
There was one out there.
In Pauling? That's down Pauling, right?
Yeah, I went to a class there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah?
Microbrewery class?
The bar.